Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the budget hearing on the proposed FY '21 budget. So I will turn it over to Dr. Beckwiler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. There are extra budget books in the front of the seats there if anyone needs one. The intent here is to go through the budget, to answer any factual questions from the public. If there are none, or if we complete those, we would adjourn this meeting and then reconvene, et cetera. So this is kind of fun to be here for the first time. Usually I'm like, this feels like very much like town meeting right now. I'm looking at the screen, trying to see what's on there, and remembering it's right here. So as you know, we've been through quite a few years, and we really have, many times during the course of this year, talked to each other about managing our success. Whether it's students, people involved in the school wanting to come here, there's just a lot of very positive things going on, and it has an impact on the budget. We have a great facility. As you all know, it took quite a while to get here, some amazing resources. And I should mention, while I'm talking, this is going to be sort of a template for town meeting presentation. So as you're hearing me, if you want me to emphasize something more for the town meeting, your particular town meeting, more or less, or if you want to change something in here, this is a time to sort of test it out. Our school-wide goals for 2021, we've had pretty much the same school-wide goals for about 10 years. We've couched them a little bit differently this year, and we've tried to honor the Minuteman Academy model as the umbrella for all the goals that we work together collaboratively. My goals mirror these, my administrators mirror these, and we encourage our teachers to refer to these as they're developing their professional goals in the evaluation process. Class of 2019, we wanted to honor not only those kids that are going on the post-secondary training, but also highlight the career placements in the local unions, Habitat for Humanity, electrical companies, plumbing and heating companies. Sometimes we put a little bit too much emphasis on only post-secondary success, and we know better than most people that there are more ways to win than just going out to college. Fulfill expectations, I think that's another theme that I've been talking to. I met with the town managers last Friday and kind of went through some of this because we assume everybody knows what we've been through, or what we were asked to do. We were asked to boost enrollment, you know, we've done that. We're actually anticipating no room for non-member students next year. As of last week, we had about 230 member district applications from nine towns for about 185 slots, 180, 85 slots. Prior to this building ever really getting an opportunity, we needed a new regional agreement. We started that process in 2010. The new building is a year ahead of schedule and on budget. There was a cry from the member towns that non-member students and communities were getting off scot-free by not having to pay or contribute to the capital, but we were successful in getting the Department of Ed to change that. So now we're collecting a capital fee. In addition, the governor last summer signed a special legislation for Minuteman. We knew the potential of our campus, we knew its compelling location, and we had the opportunity now to develop public-private partnerships to support our mission. We've had new programs, some of these we started a few years ago, before the building was even finally designed, multimedia engineering, advanced manufacturing. Both of those programs are almost full right now. In the fall, we are starting veterinary assisting. We'll start it here and then figure out where it'll grow, most likely somewhere on campus. But that will start with ninth graders this fall, and the budget before you tonight funds an animal science instructor to get that program off the ground. We've had Part A approved by the Department of Ed, Part B of our application will be approved sometime this spring, once we have a teacher on board. I want to take time at town meeting, and you can tell me if this is going to be appropriate or not for your case, but I wanted folks to see this. It's taken 12 years to get this building together. Seeing the kids here, feeling their energy, seeing their reactions, it's deeply satisfying.
It's awesome, it's huge!
I feel like I'm like a kid in a candy store. I have no limits, I can do whatever I want, and I'm just really excited to start school. That's surprising to me. I'm like very excited for it.
It doesn't seem real. When I was a student, they talked about it, and everybody was like, "Yeah, we'll never see it," you know, "one of those, and then to actually be here." And on the other side of the fence, as a teacher a few years later, it's unreal. You can't believe that we're in it.
Everything here is like new and clean, and like you can really depend on it for like what you need done.
I think it's nice that we finally have something that's state-of-the-art, especially with all the new technology that's in this school. I think it's really an upgrade, especially for vocational school like ours.
When I walked into the preschool, it was huge. I was in awe. It was such a big space to learn, they could spread out the room, and you could change it depending what you need to do. It's a very inviting environment.
The layout of the shop is a lot easier. We have a garage door. We never had one of those, and it's just easier to get materials in and out.
It's a more focused place to work now, and it's all like closer together, so we don't have to be all over the place.
It's very modern-looking.
There's more windows, there's more skylights looking up to the sky.
All the shops and how they like separate them, with the life sciences and services and then the trade hall, it's like perfect.
Okay, so this is the central staircase. You'll be using these stairs a lot heading up and down between all your classes.
I really like how the lunchroom has downstairs, upstairs, and the courtyard, so everyone can like spread out.
Everything is new, and I feel like everyone is so excited to be here. I'm really excited to be here.
First day of the year, brand-new school, super excited to see what we can do here in this new Minuteman.
As a veteran, experienced teacher, it's like I'm starting a new career.
We have a lot more work to do to kind of finish things off, tweak some things that aren't working, get it to work right. But we're a year ahead of schedule, so we've saved a lot of money, and this is the cost of being here a little earlier. Some things aren't quite polished, but we're happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to the year.
This is awesome.
So, I watch them a lot. So you may recall the other challenge we had around designing the school was that the MSBA doesn't participate in any kind of adult training space or postgraduate space. You may recall, for many years, we had a number of postgraduate adult students here during the day, and we can no longer accommodate them during the day, so what were we going to do? Well, we sort of re-energized the Minuteman Technical Institute, and we began slow last year. This year, we've doubled the enrollment up to 42. We expect that enrollment to increase again next fall, especially once we complete our accreditation process with the Council for Occupational Education. And you may have recently heard the governor's State of the Commonwealth address where he mentions specifically expanding career and technical institutes at regional vocational schools. So I'm hoping we're pretty well-positioned to take advantage of some of those resources as they're announced. Students from our member towns do get discounted tuition at the Minuteman Technical Institute. That will be, we do report those students, and they eventually become part of our Chapter 74, Chapter 70 reimbursed form. Enrollment, we're going to continue to be very proactive in enrollment. We're not resting on any kind of laurels. We believe we got to continue to inform, educate, and engage our parents and our middle school guidance staff and our middle school teachers. We're going to be improving the website, this budget supports an improved and more coordinated social marketing and media presence. We also are going to, I think, are going to have the challenge in educating families as to how our admissions and process works, because for the first time in many, many years, maybe ever, there are member town students who may not qualify for acceptance in the fall because we don't have the room. So we're going to be mindful of that and make sure that we're proactive in explaining our admissions policy. Full enrollment, which was a goal and a concern by all of our member district towns, I'm telling you it's here. Previously, we had low member enrollment. Previously, there was full access to all programs. Previously, it was told to me by some of our member towns, we had too many non-member kids. If you look at the last 10 or 12 years, about 30 to 40 percent of our kids have been from out of the district, one of the highest percentages of any regional vocational school in the Commonwealth. And it was, if you look way back, it's And the other item that I mentioned earlier was that non-members escaped the capital costs. So now the new normal is full member enrollment. The new normal is, unfortunately, waiting, because we couldn't build the size school we wanted to. We had to build what we had to get done. There are going to be zero freshmen this year coming out of the district, and in three short years, there'll be no non-member students at Minuteman. And so you think about all the work we did to get the capital fee, we're only going to be collecting it for maybe four years, maybe four years. And then the rest of this beautiful building is the responsibility of the nine-year remaining member towns. So that's going to have an impact on budgets going forward. Historical enrollment, as I mentioned, I did take some statistics for the last few years and applied them to our current number of applications that I projected enrollment for next year, very conservatively. We projected 80 percent of the applicants would actually come, although last year, 95 percent of the applicants actually came that we offered enrollment to, and 95 percent that we offered to came. So we're looking at an enrollment of 658 next year. We still have the sophomore, junior classes to graduate, but I'll remind you, the building was built for 620, so in less than a year, we're going to be at full enrollment. And that's with nine member towns, not 16. Overall enrollment, again, we just, if you take a look at the dark blue line, that's the number of towns, close to 500 next year. The withdrawn towns, which includes the most recently withdrawn town Belmont, and then our other non-member towns that are still here. So you can see the trend, where the trend is going. So that presents challenges to us. Withdrawal of towns from the district means higher costs in some cases for the short term. The new building, we're still transitioning to the new building, we're still right-sizing our enrollment to match the student enrollment, we're right-sizing our staffing to match the enrollment. We've had the opportunity to use revenue from out-of-district communities that is going to diminish over time. And then the angst about waiting lists, I just, I'm not looking forward to hearing the complaints at town meeting about kids not getting in, but they're going to be there. They're going to be there. So managing our success, we've done what we said we were going to do. Now, the budget for next year is up quite a bit. Over recent years, it's up six and a half percent. The debt service, if you look at that, payment, the mortgage payments for the building come online, almost pulling, that's up 47 percent over last year. Our assessments to member tenants, however, will be up about 9.3 percent. And the budget book that's in front here has a great amount of detail. I'm going through sort of the high-level altitude view, and if you look at our budget for the last eight or nine years, you can see the increases and decreases in some years of our operating budget and our capital budgets. You know, those big numbers in red really demonstrate the district's commitment to right-size the building as we needed to, to prepare for the capital expenditures in this budget. At our town manager's meeting Friday morning, I think it was, one of the managers said, "You know, you're almost right on the budget you projected five years ago." I said, "Thank you for pointing that out." So this isn't anything we shouldn't expect, but it is going to be difficult to explain, I think, at some meetings because of, well, just questions, normal good questions that cover the process of town meeting. This is an overview of by state function code of increases and decreases. The 3,000-line item has a big increase as we're anticipating a new bus contract, which, from everything we've been told, we have to plan for a large increase there, as been realized in other districts. Insurance, retirement, and leases, we're planning on an 8 percent health insurance increase. We have a few more staff to address the needs of the increased student enrollment, and of course, our debt service is up quite a bit. These are some other numbers in major increases. Athletic services, we have to rent more fields because we don't have any home fields, so that'll be for the next fiscal year. Hopefully, FY '22, we won't have those. So as I mentioned, some of the big drivers here, health insurance, we have, we're at the end of a three-year contract, we're renegotiating a new contract, which will have some increases yet to be determined. Staffing totals, we're trying to keep our class sizes reasonably sized, because we still have a large percentage of our population that requires accommodations on special ed and IPs. Transportation, I mentioned. Security with NTI, we're going into the evenings until 10 o'clock at night. We have a need for some increased security coverage in the front welcome center there. The technology program, we have a one-to-one technology program. We had to plan for $130,000 more just in the laptop distributions for the increase in freshmen over this year and next year. And as I mentioned, the facility trends. New positions, we're, as I mentioned, mechatronics, vet tech, multimedia, we now need two teachers in there. We'll be adding a humanities teacher because of the increase in special ed numbers and ELL students. And then we're adding a guidance co-op position, which will be a full-time position, but .5 dealing with work co-op, and we're eliminating these other positions, including an administrative We borrowed the third or fourth rounds, we anticipate, of $12 million this past fall. We had a very good, it was a pretty competitive process, and we were able to get a decent rate of 2.5 percent on that $12 million. I think we had budgeted 3.5 percent, maybe a little larger. You can see the, how the debt is being allocated. We have some previous debt that we're having to carry through with our ESCO project. Revenue that comes from other places, the state, state regional transportation aid, tuition that we're collecting this year, tuition that we're going to collect next year, we're going to apply towards next year's assessments. We have our certified excess and deficiency account, and then the non-residential capital fee is included in the revenue, and the school committee is going to be discussing how to capture that for the next year. But we've seen a slight increase in non-assessment revenue as our numbers grow, our Chapter 78 number will grow a little bit, but this year, one of the, one of the wild cards has been the Student Opportunities Act. You may have heard of it. It was passed recently, providing $1.5 billion more to schools over the next seven years, I believe. That's changed how the minimum local contribution is calculated, and it has impacted some of our member towns. The other question that was asked quite a bit is with Belmont's withdrawal, that adds another $1.5 million to the requirements of assessing the member towns. We will be collecting tuition from Belmont, somewhere between $900,000 and $1 million, which will be counted in FY '22, I expect. So that concludes my formal presentation. I don't know if there are any questions from the public. The school committee will put a motion forward to pass this budget and have their own discussion around the issues of the budget at that point in time in the regular meeting. I don't know if anyone had any questions.
So any comments or questions from the public?
So any feedback on the presentation for your town? We want to do that, we can do that after we close.
Well, given that there are no comments, we can have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Go ahead.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Hello. Time to call the regular meeting of the school committee to order. Do we have any public comment? Then I will move on to anything that anyone would like to talk about for the good of the organization. Well...
You just heard.
Yeah, I was going to say, other than, you know, all the accomplishments that we've just heard about, I think it's worth taking a moment to acknowledge all of those. Well, then let's move on to superintendent's report.
Just briefly, there hasn't been much movement. I did send you a copy of the proposed Chapter 74 regulations that were redlined by, I guess by the department. The public hearing phase of this has closed. We did express some of our concerns about the lottery admissions discussions, and we sent that letter to the commissioner, and she has received it. We also shared that letter with the MOBA Board of Directors, and several superintendents have indicated they're going to be borrowing heavily from it and sending their own letters. We heard that the anticipated action probably isn't going to be till March, maybe even And we continue, when I say we, I mean myself, as well as the MOBA Board of Directors, to meet with, well, a variety of stakeholders in this. One of the great things, I think, about the changes, I don't know if it's great, but the revisions in the exploratory frameworks, which are aligned with this effort. Michelle Rochard, Director of CTE, was one of the co-chairs on revising, or actually creating, a set of standards around exploratory frameworks that all schools that have five or more approved state Chapter 74 programs must abide by. So things like minimum number of hours of exploratory may get watered down, but at least it's in there. This is less of an issue for us now than it used to be, but it will provide some level of quality that can be assumed by parents of eighth graders whose kids are going on to exploratory in whatever school they're going on to. The only other thing related to this, access, access for us means a little bit different, I think, than for some other people knows. We've talked about access from the standpoint of non-member kids, from member kids. We've also talked about it from the standpoint of new member towns, like how do member towns get access to joining the district? And I just wanted to let you know that tomorrow, I'm meeting with some of the mayor and school committee members from Cambridge, who are, want to come and see the new school and talk to us. You know, the arc may be floating and the doors are closed, but I'll talk to them. It's really odd. Were there any other questions about the Chapter 74 process and regulations? Alice has been very helpful in her, some of the committees that she has, we've been sharing information with each other.
I just asked, of course, a bit more information about Cambridge, out of their reach, is that, I mean, are they, are they talking about, you know, sort of learning from us in terms of their own Chapter 74 program?
Every couple of years, they come by and visit. And just one of the members of that Cambridge School Committee, I think is the longest-serving school committee member, he's, he knew Minuteman 35 years ago, and then there was this phase of history where the Cambridge programs were, lost their accreditation, and all the Cambridge students came here for a few years, and then they revamped their vocational education, and all those kids went back to Cambridge. I think they just want to see what a new school looks like.
What does the, the sound like, if you share with the principal?
From me personally? Be well, do good work, and keep the
I'm trying to convey what's out of Cambridge.
I don't know, you know, it's a new mayor, some new school committee members, I think they've heard about
And so they're just coming to
Exploratory, I guess.
Okay.
I was going to say, it sounded like Mookie Betts. Better get in line pretty quickly.
Anything else?
No, I think we're ready for the finance.
Any principal report? Okay, and we'll move on to finance director report.
So the finance subcommittee, you may have noticed in the presentation as well, reviewed these documents, and they did talk about, gee, anybody want to jump in on? We put an asterisk on one of the slides. As far as this year's faculty fees, those are going to be applied to offset member district debt, capital debt. As we collect the current upcoming year's capital fees, the FINCOM recommended that we consider applying those to the stabilization account, stabilization funds, so that they could possibly still be used for offsetting debt in the future, but they could also be used if there's a need for them in capital. So that's just something I thought I'd bring up on the finance subcommittee, and gee, if any charities up want to add to that.
Sure, sure. Maybe turn to page 13 in the budget book, and you can sort of see where this would, this would fall. In the non-assessment revenue section, right now, it says, you know, non-resident capital fee of $904,000, and that, then if we had a chance to rewrite it, we would have said prior year non-resident capital fee in the same way that we have the prior year tuition. This is $904,000 that we have collected this year and been sitting in a revolving fund. What the conversation we were having is, and it really gets down to, you know, how much flexibility do you want to have in terms of dealing with build-out of the fields? There's sort of a competing sense of, you know, if, that if you There's sort of a competing sense of, you know, if, that if you get to a point where you need more money than what is going to be left in the building project fund, to finish what you promised, promised the towns in terms of, you know, in terms of one, one better field and two grass fields, you know, where are you, where are you going to quickly be able to come up with that money? And one idea is that if, that rather than parking all of next year's capital fee in a revolving fund, which would, you know, which is there, but make this a bit more transparent to give a heads up to the towns, move a $615,000 of the approximate, you know, 1.1 million that you're going to collect next year in terms of capital fees, and instead of placing it in a revolving fund, place it in the stabilization fund that would be under the control of the school on committee of the 230th vote, that could be used for any purpose that's capital, including if you just kept it there, that you could use it to offset the debt service in fiscal '22. So it doesn't take away any options, but it gives you one more, gives you the flexibility that if you want to take some of that money next year for, for the fields or for the building project. And so we were saying, if this is something that the school committee wants to do, it would, it would change this table by, in the second line, it would raise that capital equipment fee and leases by $615,000. So that would go up to $1,290,453. But then you would put another line below what would be relabeled as prior year non-resident capital fee of $904,000, and add current year non-resident capital fee of $615,000. So it would offset, it would not change the assessments that would be going to the town. It would simply just mean that next year you would be putting, you know, $615,000 of the 1.1 million that you're going to collect in capital fee in the stabilization fund rather than the revolving fee, and, you know, so the Godspeed to the school committee next year about whether that's, that's something, something there. So that's, that's, that's the proposal. I, you know, I'll, I'll leave it, you can decide whether that should be an actual motion to be voted on. And I think, I would recommend that it be since it's, so it's not in this, in this presentation.
Okay. So I think that that answers one of my questions, which was, is the finance committee recommending that that be done for this budget or for future budgets?
Yes. That we're doing, that we're making, that we're bringing in, so I can, I can move on the behalf of the finance, the finance committee, that, that a new line of current year non-resident capital fee be included in, in the non-assessment revenue category in the amount of $615,000, and that the capital, the equipment lease line fill up by the same amount because of an increase in the stabilization fund.
Okay, that was a motion?
That was a motion.
Second.
Okay. And we have a second. So let's open it up for discussion. Can I ask, what is there, where did the $650,000?
There's, there's a, there's a limit about how much the, it's a state law about how much a single year school committee budget can put into a stabilization fund, and it's a regional school committee, and then my rough calculation of that limit was about $750,000, and so I figured if you just brought the stabilization fund up to $700,000, we would all be okay.
Jeff, were you answering more on that?
Well, I was just going to make a comment.
Okay. So this money, the 1. whatever million, isn't actually currently in this budget? It's not line itemed?
Because, because it's not part of the general fund. It is part of, it is part of the revolving.
Okay.
And that's, and that's what...
Okay, so you're taking it out of the revolving fund, putting it in this?
Just keeping it in a, in a separate place.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I've kind of listened a lot to this, and at the same time, listened at our construction meetings about how the, our contingency funds are being stressed as we close out the building project. And Ford has a school building committee report about this as well, because today we heard even more news about that. And as I understand this motion and its impact, it, it would just allow the school committee to have a little bit more control over the stabilization fund. That would be better funded. Remember, we started the capital stabilization fund four years ago, I think, because we knew that the MSBA formulas to equip a vocational technical school were inadequate. So we began putting money aside in the stabilization fund so that we could buy the kinds of equipment that we knew we needed. And during the course of that time, we were very successful in getting grants, so we didn't tap that stabilization fund as much as we thought we were going to. And so now with our contingency funds being stressed, I just think it's a, it's kind of smart to try and put the money aside in case you want to use it versus if we, if the school committee really feels like we need to put more money into the fields, it would give us some options other than going back to the towns, which I think is the last thing we want to do. That's, maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but that's kind of how I see it.
And, and the way I, the way I read the state law too is that there's nothing stopping you from using the stabilization fund to pay debt service next that year. So you're not using, using that, that option.
Sue, have her hand up.
Yes, this is a real basic question, but I don't think I agree with the only one that has it. Why can't we use some of the money to decrease the assessments this year?
So this is current year collections? So we're using, they're already, they're already collected here in advance. We're using everything we collected last year to offset debt this year. We're talking about what we're collecting.
Yeah, but, but her, but her, but her point is, well, hey, an alternative would be, I mean, in the same way that we use current year tuition. And, and this budget actually raised that draw from $400,000 to $600,000 as a way to, to assess that. I think if you were really looking for a dollar in, in the pack, I would, I would look at just changing that current tuition line rather than, and then keep the capital fee line separate. But, but you're right, that, that is something that, that is also, that could be on the table, but we, we, you know, we, we had started this year with not using any of the capital fee until it's been collected and until we get it forward.
I'm just extremely sensitive to the increase in assessments. My town is going to have issues. I mean, this is, you know, this is all good news, but it's expensive, and as you know, Arlington's embarking on a new family, high school itself.
I mean, I mean, looking down the, I mean, if you speed, if you speed up now and wait for next year, you know, if you take a look at the debt service chart, that 4.5 million that is in fiscal '21, in fiscal '22, it's going to go up and start at 5. And so, and so, and so we haven't reached the plateau of what the debt service is. And so any, you know, so it's sort of a balancing act. Anything you do to soften the blow for fiscal year '21, you're going to have to make up the fiscal year '22. The reason why we focused on using a bump in the current year tuition is because of the Belmont story, you know, that we were taking, taking the Belmont assessment out, but Belmont's going to be paying it into the revolving fund. So we thought it was prudent to, to take 200. And if, if, I mean, I mean, my own view is 200 is a good number for you, but if there, there's a majority of the towns who feel that way, and if you want to take more than 200, I mean, move it past 600, my own personal view, that's within the range, range of But, but this is a separate measure. This is a balance account.
Is it possible for somebody to adjust this table and give us the correct table? It's very hard to take a vote when you don't actually see the impacts.
The impact, there is, there is no impact on the assessment on this budget.
There is actually no impact on this budget. So it doesn't affect this table. Jim's, from an accounting perspective, is saying how you would put it in the table, but I think it's hard for people to understand that it's actually money that we haven't actually collected yet. We collected that December bank.
Right.
Like, we already collected for December for the money that we're using that's in here. We're talking now about planning for money that we're collecting during fiscal year '21.
But you are going to have an extra line, current year non-resident capital fee, $615,000. So it does change the table. You don't have a white board in here or something, so you can just have a visual to see it.
Is this chart in the presentation?
It's in the presentation, but it's not displayed. It's not, it's just a picture of the chart. It's not, it's a picture of the chart.
I think Jim is doing a visual for us. So I was going to say, are there other questions while he is doing that?
So the FY '20 revolving funds are in here. The non-resident capital fee is in '924 in the revolving fund.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
No, it's '924 in the, on page 26.
Okay.
So does that mean that $20,000 is not being...
Not 100% of it was put into that covered page. We kept some of it out.
Okay.
Because we haven't collected it all yet.
Okay. But we've got a May payment that isn't in yet, right?
Yes.
Okay. So is that then, the '924 in here is projected, reflecting the May payment, but it doesn't have any, it's not reflecting next year's payments?
Right.
The 2021, but it won't be collected until December and May? Okay. So I guess my question is, this money, we really couldn't move into a stabilization fund until we have it, correct? Which wouldn't happen until...
You will, I mean, you will be, you will be collecting it, yeah. It is, I leave that up to Bob.
But I mean, we can't move money that we don't, that we actually don't own, that we're projected to have.
Right. So we could take it up, once the, when you start, and we could do it then? We could, we could look back at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I like the idea, but I need some more time to process it, and I don't think it's a vote we need to take right now, because it's not money we possess right now. I mean, we can take it up.
I mean, I mean, that we're voting on, I mean, that we're voting, that we're applying the same vote to the, to the tuition.
Say that again.
I mean, I mean, that we're, that we're voting on, on using $600,000 of the tuition money that we're not collecting until next year.
So you would add, you would add another line like this. Under here, you have current year non-resident capital fee, then prior year capital fee.
Can I?
But wouldn't that change all the channels?
No, because up top, you put an increase in the lease for that amount.
Yeah.
So with all of that showed.
So it's an accounting...
Add it there.
Yep, I understand that completely. It's going to change these percentages, and you're going to have to explain those to the towns. Right. Okay. Can I ask what the impact is for the school committee to consider this, because we're just hearing it tonight? We don't have it so that we can look at it, to move forward with the budget without making this change? If you could just speak to...
Because I would like, I'm with Alice. I'd like to see what it does to the percentages and how it visually looks. I mean, I recognize that it's...
I see.
Right?
Yeah.
Like, I'm going to have to explain it, she's going to have to explain it, you're going to have to explain it.
Right, and I'm not able to explain it right now.
Tim, can I ask you to ask Ford to give us just a piece, I mean, just his, his sense from, from a building project point of view about whether this is worth spending time on or...
Yeah, I sort of thought of this as a financial toolbox, you know? We'd be putting money into a financial toolbox. Very quickly, we were looking at a $5 million contingency leftover for the fields, which doesn't do what we really wanted to do, because that would cost roughly 10 to 12 million. But we're looking at a $5 million. As of today, we're looking at best a little over $2 million for our fields. So it would be a resource of monies that could go in to make some accomplishments to the field rather than just a large athletic field, like a football field, which could be used for soccer and field hockey or anything else, synthetic field with lights only, didn't include fences, didn't include anything. So that's what the $2 million, so that's what it could be used for. I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that we ought to, we've heard about it this time, and I think we ought to discuss it in our next meeting while it's fresh, because we don't have the money right now.
Right. Well, again, I think that if, if this is something that we can discuss later, after we pass the budget, when we've had a chance to really look at the numbers, we can hear a little bit more about, you know, potential need rather than trying to rush into it tonight, I would recommend that we do that. Now, we do have a motion on the table, and I'm staring at you, Jeff, because you know the, can we withdraw the motion or do we vote?
Did we actually, oh, you're, oh, yeah. The person who made the motion to withdraw it, we had to choose to do so unless we vote not to accept the withdrawal. So the only question I would ask before we do this is that if we don't vote on this tonight and we vote on the budget, does that mean we can't vote on this later?
My understanding is that we could vote an amended budget when this changes.
Okay.
Then it's... Because we haven't, we don't, we're not under a, in previous years, when the first town meeting was, and they would vote on our warrant article, we had to be within 30 days of that, and that was always Lincoln, and it was always very early.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, to refer this to the executive committee.
I don't even think you need a motion for that.
I think you just need to withdraw your motion.
Don't have to be within 45 days of the first town meeting. That's what our agreement is.
The first time, well, when's the first? We're within that time.
Well, we are now, but I, I think you're the first town meeting, which is...
March 23rd.
So that's, I think, where later this week is 45 days.
But the article for Minuteman is usually towards the end of, the middle of March?
It's going to be over the March 23rd.
The Minuteman article? That's the first I...
Sometimes the first one. She would go.
Steve, Davey, should we, should we withdraw?
Yeah, I think so. But I support it, I understand it, but I think people would like to see it in writing and talk more about it, and I think we should honor that.
Okay.
Okay, so I just, though, need to clarify kind of this last conversation that we just had. If we withdraw this and we don't take action on it right now, but we pass the budget tonight, we won't have another school committee within 45 days of the next town meeting. So in terms of amending the budget, that wouldn't happen in that town timeframe.
Well, it wouldn't change the assessment, so it wouldn't be that complex. I'd have to check into the, we've always updated our numbers for assessments, sometimes right up until town meeting time. We gave all the town managers a placeholder back in the fall. We gave them revised placeholders this past Friday, and those are all subject to revision based upon the governor's budget and other things. So revisions are not excluded from no action. So revisions are not excluded from no action.
Okay. So it would be possible to take this up at our next.
Yes.
School committee meeting. Jennifer?
So, here's my question. So the one point whatever million, one point three mil, or one point?
One point one.
One point one million thirty or? Is that in here somewhere? No. So it doesn't relate?
That was, that was, that was in the memo that I, that I had to give you last week.
So what would prevent us from, when we do get the money, putting it into the stabilization fund? Because it's not in this budget anyways. I mean, that money isn't highlighted anywhere in this budget. Right?
There, there is, there is.
I mean, I see the transparency thing.
Right, right. That's, I mean, that's more about having, having the conversation as part of, part of this whole.
Right. But I think we could have a vote much later.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, but the money's gonna be within, within the accounting system somewhere.
Right. I mean, I think it doesn't need to be in time for the town meeting votes. I think we can make that decision and make it very clear in a public meeting that that's what we intend to do and then put it in next, next year's budget books so that it's very clear and add those line items in next year's budget book and explain where they come from.
Okay. Jeff?
I wanna point out that there are two important related issues here that have a multi-year time horizon and go back to the founding. Okay, the, the first one is the discussions we've had all these years about taking in revenue from tuition one year and applying it to the next year budget. Now, there have all been all sorts of discussions on, well, why don't we just do it for this year? And that kind of thinking never was, never thought was very good because then you get kind of a double bump this year, but in the future, you kind of lose out on that. In other words, you get a boost one year if you decide to change your formula and spend it this year. I don't like doing things that give you an artificial boost one year, right? So this is kind of the same sort of thing except it has a, a, a interesting time limit on it. Because these, the argument is gonna become moot very soon because we got these few dollars coming in every year for only maybe three more years in terms of out-of-district tuition and capital fee. And then this figure is off and we got our, what should be our wit. Our wish was to have no out-of-district students. The penalty of that wish is that you don't have some money coming in to offset assessments. And we see the end of that money possibly coming in in three years. So you can spend more of it in one year than, but if you're gonna, you know, take it from one bucket, it's gonna come out of another bucket, right? So you're gonna have less of it, of a benefit the following year and you're gonna find that you're gonna have a number of unusually large increases in operating budgets for the next few years. This isn't gonna be the only one. As a school fills up and enrollment goes up, as we have a smaller percentage of out-of-district students, we're gonna have hits to our operating budget every year. We're gonna be back here for a few years until when there are no out-of-district students. We, then we, we release, we reach stability, okay, more or less. So we have to understand that this revenue coming in, number one, is very limited in the number of years we're gonna get it. And if you choose to spend more of it one year, then you're gonna have less the next year and you might be unhappy about that. So I was never in favor of spending a lot of it right away. That's one issue. The other related issue is the issue with money for the fields. Now, the, the problem there is that.
I'm sorry, can I, you know, just, this, I think we've agreed that we're not gonna take action on the capital fee issue tonight. So we do need to get back to the budget.
This is actually my comment for the budget as well.
Great, okay.
So I won't have to make a bet, right? So what it is, I want this to be kind of on the record because my concern is that we have this larger incre, I'm only worried about the operating set part of the budget now that some people are gonna have, you know, not be happy with. And we're gonna have possibly, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, additionally larger than we would like increases for the next few years as we settle into the new building and because of the, in far more rapid than expected increase in the number of in-district students. So we have to be able to explain that for the next few years and understand that part of that increase is driven by the fact that we're gonna get less money from out-of-district students. And we have to understand that. And the other related thing is, when we talk about using this money for the fields, then we have to have a discussion with our member towns. Because if we're not gonna use it to reduce the assessment, then there has to be a benefit to them. They have to understand why that is. So the reason that I was not afraid of this is because it does not make us have a decision today. Okay? We can still have that discussion. I'm not saying that we're out of that, in which case I vote no on it. It's something, it's just giving us more flexibility in making the decision after we have a discussion, after we see our financial picture a little bit more and have a discussion with the member towns. But I am concerned about these, explaining these operating increases that I suspect are gonna happen for the next, am I wrong about that or do you think I'm probably right?
Right, right. Definitely, definitely knowing about the operating. I think Dr. B, we are today that we're, we're in the process of brightsizing, but I think we are close to where we need to be. So the operating won't be as much an issue as we went forward, but we still have a couple of years of, you know, when we have new fields, there's gonna be new major requires. So there are gonna be some operating increases, Jeff, as you predicted.
And, and less money from out-of-district students as that goes to zero and that's gonna increase the challenge of our discussion with our member town because it was unexpected by me that that was gonna happen.
Okay. I'd like to, did you have anything more on this or anything more from the finance?
No, I'm gonna talk, but, but, but just three small points for clarification to take a look at this, at this book. Again, on page thirteen, towards the bottom, when you take a look at the, at the ESCO lease assessment, this is, this is a piece of good news. Keep in mind that the nine member towns are not paying that full five hundred and twenty thousand, but in fact, the seven ex-members are paying ninety-eight thousand of it. So, but, but, but it is, it is an assessment, that's why, why, why it's on that page, but it's actually about a hundred thousand dollars less than what it looks like.
Does that, I had a question. Does that continue?
For, for about five more years or more?
Four more years, okay.
Four budgets from now, you know?
Okay.
On page fifteen, when I was taking a look at this, I was going, hey, how the heck is Bolton's number going down when the number is going up? And, and the thing to keep in mind there for Bolton and Lancaster and Stowe is that in the fiscal year twenty, this current year, there is that middle school, there is the assessment for the middle school program and it's not during fiscal year twenty. And if you took that out, everyone, everyone's assessment, the, the, uh, assessments, assessments are going up, going on, on an apples to apples basis. But if you just have a question about that. And then finally, on page five, it talks about the OPEC benefit, I mean, the OPEC contribution. That's, you know, there is no single line item for it. It is within that five thousand series. And, and just want to be clear for the record that our recommendation for the OPEC funding for next year is, is sixty-nine thousand, um, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that is equal to three hundred and ninety-five member students as of last fall times, a hundred and seventy-five dollars for OPEC. And, and just.
That was a formula that the FinCom suggested using. And I tie it back to the ESCO conversation that we had. When ESCO debt attires, the FinCom talked, and actually, the town administrators talked to Dr. B about the idea and he brought it to FinCom about when that debt attires, it would be proven to use that money that you've already been used to paying to go towards OPEC. And then we could actually start making up some time. So the FinCom and the TA working with the town administrators and the FinCom, a lot of good ideas have come out about how to be prudent with the budget. And so even the stabilization funds, again, part of that forward thinking of how to try and use what funds we do have without going back to town for more funds.
I mean, I mean, that, that's, yeah. I mean, I, I would be comfortable long-term with, with an OPEC payment of five or six hundred thousand dollars each, each year, you know? But you're clearly not ready for that yet, but with the ESCO lease, that's about four or five hundred thousand dollar payment falls off, maybe, maybe that's the time to shift it, shift it into the OPEC one.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, what I'd like to do now is to move on to a motion so that we then can open it up for discussion. Jeff?
I vote to approve the FY twenty-one budget of twenty-five million, five hundred, two thousand, nine hundred, forty-six dollars as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Sorry, I have one question I have to find. On page twelve, for historical enrollment, of course, I immediately go to acting and I'm like, real? Sixty-two?
Are you back then?
Yeah.
So that's, that's your, that's your projection?
Oh, projected, yeah.
Yeah. You've got a lot of applicants.
There's forty-something applicants right now.
That's exciting. I was gonna say, no one else almost doubles here.
Well, Stone doubled this year.
Yeah, Stone doubled this year, so you're leading the way.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, that's true.
I'm so sorry for.
Let's be careful about double.
We pointed that out in the finance committee. We were five hundred percent higher.
You see what we're gonna be the year after.
Um, other, any other questions or comments?
I just can ask Bob a question.
Of course.
Bob, did you figure out what, what the?
Yes, I did. So Jennifer, that went out on the website and then fourteen in the textbook before we figured in the new chapter seven. That's the only page that's different. So we'll get that out and we'll put it in later. But next, just pointing out.
So page sixteen will be?
Adjusted.
Reconfigured.
Yeah. It was based on, before we had chapter seven.
So will, will I get one too or will you all get one?
And actually, the page here, this supplementary page, actually has the actual number in there, so.
So we can cross?
It's been adjusted and we can cross that page out. We'll, we'll have it.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Can I? This is gonna be available for us to send electronically?
Yes. It's on the website.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? Passes unanimously. Will I move on? Could I have a motion? Jeff?
I vote, I move to approve the FY twenty-one preliminary assessment of seventeen million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
Comment, which is that we can, once we vote these, we can lower them or we cannot raise them.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Passes unanimously. And Jeff, the final motion?
I move to authorize five hundred and forty thousand dollars from the certified E and D to reduce member town assessments for the FY twenty-one budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, this, this is a number that, that's been leveled for the, for the past couple of years and we're sort of watching to see and we're, we're, we're not really optimistic that it can be the same level next, next year, just a, just a sort of.
Correct.
Which would also perhaps have an impact on member town assessments.
Yeah, yeah.
Next year might be a tough year for us.
Every dollar less here is valid.
Yeah, yeah. Got it. Next year's gonna be a tough year.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? Passes unanimously. Okay. I would like to extend a thank you to the administration and to the finance committee for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
What are you gonna do?
I know.
There is a quick one-page summary of talking points?
Yeah.
That we wanted to kind of put together for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to school building committee report.
Thank you. We had our weekly meeting with the team and our punch list items, there are four hundred and eighty-two. There are a hundred and twenty-eight that are open. A hundred and sixteen have been not approved as of today and we've closed three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one. So we are making progress. The punch list process has been going well, as reported in the past. And the remaining work, for the most part, is gonna be completed over the winter and spring breaks, which we need to have the building for ourselves and the campus. We expect to receive our final certificate of occupancy within the next week from Lincoln for the building, except for our theater. We are waiting for a temporary certificate of occupancy for the theater for the first and second floors and we hope to receive that this week. However, the building inspector has asked us before he will grant that, that the, we change our address from seven hundred and fifty-eight Merritt Road, Lexington, to seven hundred and fifty-eight Merritt Road, Lincoln. This request, request could compromise the safety and response times that have been thoroughly discussed with both towns in the past. We also want to note that there is a Merritt Street in Lincoln, however, it's three miles away from our school. The TCO responds to agreed-upon requests for netting, which we've agreed to, which we are getting priced to have up and be put in designated places. The demo of the old building is approximately two months late because of Eversource. This is to disconnect the power. That's all we're asking to do is disconnect the power. And remember, there's nobody in that building right now. Eversource now says that they can permanently cut the power probably by the end of the week. I think I reported that in our last meeting. It was the end of the week, but that was a couple of weeks ago. Eversource has been unresponsive and irresponsible through the entire project. I will tell you from other projects out there, that's their customer service with a lot of other places. With the exception, exception of the demolition of the old building, our project has been, as you know, well ahead of schedule. As for the budget, we are on budget and will be on budget when we complete the project, however, not to our satisfaction. At our building committee meeting on January twenty-first, our budget was ninety-three point one percent complete. Ninety-seven point three percent of it was committed. And the balance of the budget was three point nine million dollars at that time. As of today, however, we are considerably projecting that by the end of demolition and after all estimated contingencies are in, all claims by subcontractors, which we have some, should, we should be left with approximately two million dollars. At the end of the summer, our last, the last summer, coming into the fall, we anticipated we'd have five million dollars left. As you are aware, we have paid for the design plans from Castle Booths to construct athletic, an athletic campus composed of a stadium, synthetic field, athletic fields with stands, lighting and a field house, two additional synthetic fields, baseball and softball fields, and six tennis courts. We have also paid for and permitted that plan with both, Lexington and Lincoln, over the past year. Five million dollars would not have gotten that plan done that we have seen. So our superintendent has been exploring other options. But for now, there can only be. But for now, they can only be on an exploratory basis for obvious reasons. $2 million should buy us one synthetic athletic field for football, soccer, and other sports, plus lights. That's it. There may be opportunities to reverse some of the loss of contingency funds. Since October 15, 2018, we've approved $2 million in construction change orders resulting in the drawing down of our contingency funds. We are reviewing all these expenditures. Lincoln inspection fees of over $1 million is going to be contested. Plus, Lincoln inspectors, through their requests, for example, the netting of the theater, have cost us additional monies. The theater and greenhouse have had some overruns. The national grid strike, if you remember that a long time ago, meant we had to rent a generator. That alone costs $500,000 that we had to spend, which we hadn't planned on. Two of our larger subcontractors, Dow and Griffin, have fairly large claims against us for additional payments pending. What are we doing about this? We will be looking much closer at contingency requests, excuse me, we will be challenging Lincoln's inspection fees, and are almost finished with our evidentiary reports. We will be challenged the subcontractor's claims. At the same time, our superintendent is looking at alternative funding options for the field project, one of which we discussed earlier. He is looking at alternative construction, he is looking at revenue generating options, which will be discussed all in the future. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Ford? Want to report?
Yes.
Jeff, could you explain about the address change again?
Explain what?
The address change. I just have to put it bottom line.
It came, the request came from Lincoln.
That, yeah.
From the, from the inspector, or?
We, we assume it was through the assessor's office. But the, the reason it's, we're, we're not agreeing to it right now until all the first responders get together is that two years ago, we had this same discussion, agreed to keep it a Lexington address. We've had experience now with Lincoln trying to respond to emergencies at the building, and they've been inadequate already. And now if we add a Merritt Street, Merritt Road to a town with a Merritt Street, I just, I'm not willing to go into that safety abyss, after all we've done for safety and security in this, this building. We had the nuclear folks here last week, we're going to ask them to come, we're a nuclear, we're a, we're part of the Seabrick evacuation plan here at Minuteman, and so they came and met with us because we have to update all of our materials around that in the event that that should ever happen. But they're going to help us if we want them to facilitate this request. So we're not agreeing to it till we're certain the first response issues have been dealt with adequately.
Plus, it's got a whole cascade...
Right. And he's holding up the TCO. So we have a theater with a program that's now four months before school ends, and the kids can't even get into their shop.
And we have a production within the next...
We have our annual spring...
And they can't get in there either, which is a good chance for them to use a theater.
Thank you, Jeff.
Did I sound frustrated or not?
I think we got it.
It was a fairly frustrating one.
Yep. And any, any other questions for Ford? I can't see the, the one, so. Okay, thank you, Ford. Secretary's report.
Strategic planning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning, Sue.
So as you all know, because you were there, we had what I think was a very productive strategic planning retreat. And I, again, thank Amy and George in particular for running it essentially, and helping us do in a short period of time, awful lot of work, to come up with our largest priorities for the next five to 10 years as a school committee. And I can no longer remember what they actually were, but I know that Amy, Amy's putting together a report, and so we'll have all that in writing very soon. Would anybody like to add anything?
Extremely welcome.
I'm very sorry to have missed it.
We missed you.
We were ill. And you will get the full report.
You're glad I wasn't here.
Exactly. I didn't need to share that.
No.
Anything else, any questions for Sue?
I just want to say you were replaced. Brewster was there.
Oh, that's right.
You didn't know about Brewster?
Brewster, no, I don't.
Brewster is a dog.
Oh.
A beautiful dog.
A service dog.
A yellow lab, that's part of the prison fox program, so highly trained. He represented you very well.
I am sure, but now I even wish I was here to see Brewster.
He slept.
I usually try and stay away.
Okay. Now, Secretary's report.
I move to approve the draft minutes of January 14, 2020, as presented.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Please, I just saw it from my table, I haven't been able to read it, so I have to abstain of the, the awareness.
I think these were emailed out ahead of time.
I didn't, I didn't see that email, but you have enough of them, so it doesn't matter. My feelings aren't hurt, don't worry.
Okay. And anything else? All in favor?
So it's 9-1? I mean, yeah, 9-1?
Opposed, abstaining?
9-1.
Same, just hasn't. Okay. We will need a motion to enter executive session. All of them?
Actually, we don't, we don't need any executive session.
Oh.
And just to give, there's been no change since we met two weeks ago in number one. Number two, there are two meetings scheduled over the next two weeks with the negotiations. Is it Friday?
Friday.
Friday, yeah, we're meeting twice. And the, the minutes can wait till the next meeting. That's confirmed today in our...
Can you tell the office good news till the end of the year?
I wanted to see how long you'd be able to time it.
Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do I have a second? All in favor? Unanimously.